It's six o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody, we'll start with a prayer and then the pledge. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this great day. In the last couple of days, there's been a couple of families that lost their belongings in a fire, just prayed with them and... I pray that everybody around is faithful, wisdom, and in the right position at the time for the community, and all this, I pray in your name, amen.
Amen. We need to speak to the United States.
Barth?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
Beverly?
I am here.
Egley?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
And Cooper is...
You had before to approve a warrant.
This is not a big deal, but it might be 100 years from now when they redist.
110 dollars, correct? 100 thousand? Yep, I can correct that.
Anything else? Except the minutes?
I make a motion to, except the minutes as amended.
Second?
Second.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
I just put one of them in my tree, it cost me $189, all aluminum, three core.
This is gold plated.
It must be.
No, the radiator was 279. The H&amp;W is probably for all the department's monthly bills.
That makes a lot more sense.
279.
And Mike Bailey, one of the things that's...
He'd use his personal car.
Okay. And short of that, I have nothing. I'll approve it if nobody else has anything.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'll second that. We'll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Barth?
Same. Okay, courts and commissions, minutes of the CRA. I read it. Okay. Council Committee reports, I see water and sewer met 9/6. Taylor's not here, anybody on that committee want to comment on that?
Well, yeah, we had pretty good discussion, me and Ron and McDonald Air.
These minutes are from 9/6 and you had these in the packet, the last meeting. The most current meeting was on the 14th, last Wednesday, the 14th, and we do not have any minutes from that yet.
So they did talk about that two weeks ago, didn't you?
Last week, yes.
Yeah, we beat that horse almost.
Yep, this one is done.
Okay, so you don't have any minutes, so anything you want to talk about?
Taylor had them, he said he would have them before he left and he didn't send them to me, did he send them to you? Good.
Okay, so I guess we'll wait for a couple more weeks, nothing to act on, okay?
Well, I think we did do something to act on, but it's got to go through a solicitor.
Right.
And he didn't send you?
I don't believe he did.
Okay.
Okay, and the other committee reports?
Yes, the ordinance committee met also on 9/14. You guys have in front of you the minutes from that meeting. Some of our current ordinances, so we sat down, we worked through several of them, and we have actually passed them on to Troy, so that hopefully we can present them to the council.
Okay.
You said you passed them on to Cory?
No.
Troy, Cory, it sounded like him.
I see you had one, three ordinances you wanted to tweak a little bit.
Yeah, and actually there's discussions of taking one and kind of splitting it and creating a second one.
Okay.
And then potentially creating an additional, so creating two new ordinances and then updating someone that we have.
In reading some of his notes on that phone, do you want to have another meeting?
I'm guessing we'll have to after you...
Yeah, why don't I just kind of throw it together what I can and then you guys can meet and critique and add, subtract.
Yeah.
Send to her and she'll contact us? That'd be wonderful.
Sounds good.
Long overdue on some of these ordinances, so I'm sure...
Some of them haven't been looked at since 99 and '03.
Yeah. Times has changed a few times since then, right? Okay, any other committee reports?
I got to address something real quick about Park Board. We have a meeting coming up on Wednesday and I know we have another, Jennifer's going to talk about the trail during their talk tonight, but I was going to bring to council the purpose of Park Board. I talked to Lindsay, I talked to Val and Gary, we have a meeting coming up on Wednesday. I've been part of the Park Board, Cory has, I think, several, Eric has. The purpose of Park Board, I don't know if we really need a Park Board, we're coming to council to ask your thoughts and opinions and then, like I said, we have a meeting Wednesday night. Back in the day when the Park Board was in existence, it kind of helped with operations, budgetary needs, ideas on improvements to the park and everything, where I know nowadays Cory kind of has more of a working relationship with ideas with, you know, the splash pad operations, the pool, he's got ideas about the basketball courts and, you know, Val and Gary also have ideas, but they used to run all those through Park Board and even during budgetary... Time if they don't have a real purpose or need to meet and be a part of the operations of the park, if that makes sense. You know, at times we have school board or school representation, we have public representation, council representation. Kind of just hold the ideas of what they've been doing, what they found doing, and the operation and what their goals are maybe through, you know, Cory's department, their department.
But you would still use Val and Gary?
They would be the managers.
Or whoever would be in their position would be the one that comes to Cory and says, hey, we need this, 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 or this is wrong.
So like I said, I talked to Val and Gary about it and talked to Cory, talked to the mayor, I talked to Lindsay Thiel. We've got a lot of good groups down there making improvements to different areas of the park, you know, the splash pad, walking trail, softball association, a lot of improvements, raising money for those improvements, and they're going to be asking for money too from the city, but, you know, the ball association, a lot of neat things are happening, the school does improvements to their facilities, so a lot of good groups doing a lot of good things, but back in the day, you know, when Park Board was there, we kind of listened to different ideas and not objectives, but I'm not sure if it's needed, if that makes sense.
As far back as I can see, when we went from a board of public affairs to it being run by a council, that's when the Park Board was established, because it used to be just coaches and stuff, they just ran it, they just, I mean, we only had one diamond and that's where it all came from, and as far as I could research, nothing's changed since they took over back in the mid 60s, early 60s, so I think it's long overdue for some type of change.
So Troy, if that would happen, how do we, we just abandon that committee right now?
I'd have to look at, because I believe, probably have to get into how it was established, but I know in the Ohio revise code, there's specifics about municipal establishment. I know, because I've only looked at it briefly, but the way our members are chosen, that's exactly right out of the Ohio revise code section, so that tells me they probably elected to do so, my guess is there's some guidance in the code about what you want to do if you want to abolish that group or whatever, so I'd have to take a look at it, but my guess is it wasn't just a village decision like, hey, we're going to need some help down there, let's establish a park board, I think somebody probably went to the code and said, hey, this park decisions like this is kind of beyond the everyday council stuff, we're going to need some assistance with that and this is perfect and set it up and however long ago that was, many, many years ago, and then it just kind of took off from there, so, but I can definitely take a look at that.
Appreciate that. Any other comments, what's your thoughts?
We talked about it a long time ago, like 2009 probably, about maybe not having a park board, I was on park board at the time, I was president, and wondered if there's a need for it, and we actually, it was Ron Bauer and them were all on there at that time, he was the park board president, and a lot of the stuff that we normally dealt with was paying for bills or, you know, a proven roundup or triplet or something like that. At the time, being the president, they want, they had, I think it was Mayor Manheadly at that time maybe, or one of them, they wanted me to do the evaluations for the park director, and I said, well, I'm not down there on a day-to-day basis, I don't, when I come through here, everything's mowed and everything's taken care of, but I'm not down here every day to see, you know, how busy they are, I said, I don't know if that's really my job to do, and I said, do you think you'd be the village administrator, and when I passed it on to Kent, Kent was not interested.
He was like, that's one more thing I don't want to add to my plate, and so it just kind
of got dropped from, but Cory's taken on a lot more than what Kent had, the initiative, Cory was on park board too for quite a few years, so I think, I don't know, I'm not saying they're not needed, but a lot of the stuff that they do every month, you're the liaison, normally it's a proven...
Operation.
Operations that they could go through or village administrator, I mean, they have a budget set up, they do have a lot of good ideas, people, I'm guessing on park board, but a lot of that stuff comes through a council and through the village administrator anyway, so.
The other thing to think of is, and I'm just quickly going off the top of my head, is they may be the entity that if, and I know it's been discussed with splash pad and stuff like that, if there's a levy to be done, that may be through the recreation board or park board, whatever we want to call it, they may somehow be the ones that are able to ask that that be submitted or whatever, so to make sure that we're not getting rid of something and then all of a sudden no longer able to...
You got to start it up again, it'd be kind of embarrassing.
It's going to be, I mean, if we did anything, it'd be next year, I'm sure.
Right.
For the following year.
By the first of the year, so we got some time and then Troy, if you'll do a little research, and so maybe we have to keep it, I shouldn't say have to, have to keep it. Okay, any other comments before we move on? Okay. Administrator's report?
I just got a couple things. Four pits for the well field have been completed, you have the line, the sleeve and everything underneath the railroad tracks, so that portion is done.
Well, that didn't take them long.
Yeah, they finished up on Friday, finished everything up on Friday.
Did they leave the pits open or did they plug the casing and shut them shut?
They're plated it off right now.
Okay.
Orpman is hoping to be here the 30th, if not the 30th, the first of next month, to drill the main wells for wells eight and nine. East High Street, they did start on that today, they'll be back tomorrow morning around 7:00 AM to get that trench asphalted shut, the plates will go back on the road for another day or so until the asphalt cooled off to allow traffic to drive on it. The pavilion kitchen was demoed today, so tomorrow, battered shell cabinetry should be there to set the lower cabinets and mount the granite tops to one side of the kitchen. I don't know if Val will touch on this or not, I can bring it up, the roll-up windows for the girls softball concession stand have been completed, so they got a nice set of roll-up concession stand windows. They still need to trim them out, need to be wrapped, but... Other than that, that's all I got.
Did the state start paving the roads in town?
Oh, yeah, they did, yeah.
You know, I've had, since it's out of my way, that's the reason they did that first, and I was like, whatever.
Yep. It's true, that's what they said, that's why they were starting out there first.
There is some perks to this job, right?
Well, they said they was forced to do it.
I don't think that company would...
The completion date on that, they're still sticking to October 31st, so for all the paving and stuff to be done.
Today.
They will be, there's a lot of intersections, all the intersections with sidewalks, they are cutting all those out and going to put in the ADA, those little handicap, the little red mats, they have to put all those in, all those intersections, so there'll be a lot new, a lot of new sidewalks.
As far as paving, the only thing they've got left is High Street, John F. Schmidt, isn't it? Well, they got that, one more lane on 18 towards Defiance, but...
And they did go out, I believe, to the drive to the school, didn't they go out there on 18? Because originally, originally they were to stop there at, is it Ishes there on 18 East? Right, that was originally where they were going to stop. And they had asked if, you know, the village had any interest going farther, and I asked them to go out to the school, since Van Cress is now, you know, annexed in, it's all part of the, part of the village, so.
Well, it's good to see finally get it done.
How many years, three, four? They kept saying. It's been quite a while. Pushed back like years, I'm going to use three.
Okay. Any questions for administrator?
Took a lot of rough rides out of the...
Slows traffic down, right?
Yeah, we did hire, hired Jody Sanders is going to be our new cleaning person on hospital day for her physical and drug screen, so she's still pending her background.
Local girl?
Yes.
So does that need to be a motion by someone, because you're recommending her, right?
Yes, recommending her.
You can hire anybody you want, can't you?
Probably comes through us.
I imagine part-time's the same as the full-time.
Well, we'll do if it's not, so I'll recommend we hire, what's her last name, sorry?
Jody Sanders.
Jody Sanders, new cleaning lady and does pavilion too, right? Takes care of that?
Yes.
So I recommend we hire her.
I'll make a motion. Second.
We'll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, any questions for the administrator? Okay. Conrad Beck from Beck Insurance, present to answer any questions.
Just wanted to introduce myself, Cheryl said that there's new council numbers since I was here last, and of course there is COVID as well. Renewal from 96 to 2022, that's a difference of 26 years, it was the beginning of 27 renewal, previous... of the premium paid three years prior, and then that's based on this management and claims history, so you're actually this year getting 91% of the full amount who are eligible for back to credit. The next jump is at 32 years, it goes, 32 and plus is 19%, and I just got an email today, I don't know if... The proposal, the changes are pretty much the same as they had been, there have been a few enhancements that have been put in, and it doesn't, something that you don't really notice much about, which is certain limits have been increased, for example, villages that have police dogs, the annual mortality went from 10,000 to 40,000. I don't know if you had any other members look through it, but we've updated schedule. Either of you would like me to address, I did quote some options for consideration. Counsel?
Yeah.
So you've seen this then, so.
I went over it briefly, Conrad, and I must say, you've always done us a good job, you've always been fair with me, you've taken care of...
The other part of that was, where you listed on the bottom, all the different coverage rates and what have changed in dollar amount, I was, I was hoping to talk to Cheryl tonight about, you know, what she felt comfortable doing, but not knowing she wasn't going to do it, so. If she wanted to increase any of those or reduce any of them.
Right, I mean, with the liability limits, that's, everybody always asks me, what liability limit should we go with? But that's hard to know. With the earthquake coverage, I've been quoting that every year and I get laughed out at some meetings, but I don't know if you saw the note in my email, the frequency of seismic activity in Ohio has increased significantly and... As of late, so, whether there's 31 already this year, so I always, I've been quoting that as an option, just to put it in your ball court, if you don't want it, well, fine, but I don't want there to be earthquake damage and that, or you say, you mean that's all the...
As you see, the major worldwide earthquakes has major devastation, but in Ohio, is there that kind of physical damage to structures where they would have that? I never hear, see in Ohio where there's an earthquake in Ohio, it took a building down or, you know, ruptured a major foundation where it's...
Not yet.
I'm just saying.
I think the nearest one, the part called, correctly, by Lima, and I think that was... And then I had another, this village actually used to go when I presented this, they regularly jumped on it, the community, a welder had been called out because they had a bunch of well casings that had shifted. If there's a major fault line that runs from western Kentucky through to Lake Erie, somewhere between Toledo and Sandusky, and, you know, growing up northwest Ohio, it's hard for me to imagine we're going to have an earthquake. I know my daughter lives in Kalamazoo and she was there when one went through there, she was in, I forget, like Home Depot, I believe, and she thought the shelves were all coming over and she thought it sounded like a freight train coming through there. Some people think that, yes, it's going to happen, it's just a matter of when, and people... Your guess is as good as mine in terms of that, but again, I just think that, present that as an option for consideration. The other thing is the cyber attack stuff, that's... I know I had one... I know I had one thing that's bottom of my mind, I had an entity where an employee changing bank accounts. This officer got an email indicating here's my new bank account information. And the email did not come from an employee. This was a verbal communication. How is it that these standards through the cell phone, somebody listening through a cell phone? I mean, I don't know, but there's just, stuff's happening that's beyond my imagination. You'll see that the premium to even decrease deductibles is somewhat significant, but the reason being, there has been enough picking that activity.
Is there a deadline, well, what's the deadline for that to sign off?
Um, I actually would do have a
I was just looking at the committee, so we have a street light and property, I would think that was going Or finance could help make the property. Well, I think it needs to be looked at, committee looked at it, instead of just blowing it off. Down, down the street. If you'll look at it, your committee. Appreciate it. Any questions?
No, to what extent that you really want to look at, I mean, I could spend an hour talking to you about coverage, but if the committee would discuss it and not there, or if you have questions, you can feel free to
Pretty much made your Well.
Where, you know, potentially you might want to consider.
Right. All right.
Not very often, they change the coverage, but once in a while. At least look
Seems like on some of that older stuff, we still had pretty high deductibles and
A lot of times the deductibles are not very increasing deductible, it's not much of a premium savings oftentimes because this is a package program put all together. And so it's looking more, here's all your stuff, all your coverages, and here's the premium for the total. But every once in a while I have some entities that have increased deductibles. But a lot of times when I've quoted it as an option, they'll get and say, wow, if we have one claim, that easy takes care of that, you know, I mean.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Solicitor's report.
Just have a couple of things from legislation standpoint, resolution twenty-two dash thirteen, a third reading by caption only, a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Defiance County Commissioners for the recovery of Monday.
So move. Second.
Second.
Roll call. Charlie.
Egley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Basset?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
And the other thing is that in the form of a resident, it's basically a motion. This has to do with the Defiance County Budget Commission and the apportionment of the local government funds. Now see what's in there and what would be forty-five cents. Need a motion to approve that.
And Cheryl did just want you to know that that is up from last year. There was eighty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents, so it's up a good chunk.
I saw it in the paper and I didn't know what it was from last year, so.
To move.
Do we, okay.
I'll second.
Second. Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Basset?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
And the other stuff I've been working on, we touched on some of it, still working on some details and on the spec building. Getting some approvals from the tower company, that's still, and they got everything and they're considering it, but we haven't heard back from them yet. Working with Cory and AEP, trying to get them to tell us what they want as far as an easement out at the well field for their electric lines they're going to put in. Stuff Tony mentioned from the ordinance committee, which he just recently got, but we'll start working on that.
Okay, any questions for our solicitor? Okay, thanks Troy. Department of Public Anything to report?
Is there going to be a discussion about the
Yeah, chief emailed today.
Yes.
And I didn't know if you want me to go ahead and just read his name off, or you can, or, I can do that. Chief's still doing physical therapy, but Andrew Fritsch, he is twenty-three years old from Stryker, Ohio. He has just completed his academy here back in twenty-two. Would the chief like to bring that motion to the mayor's recommendation to do? Patrolman one, I believe, right? Doc, so.
Yeah, I can't remember, it's two or one.
But he still have to be passed as physical and drug test and everything, but I know the chief had just emailed us out today, so it was
Yeah, he told me this morning. Trying to fill me in. So I'm going to recommend.
He had four applicants, I believe, for that position. So he decided to go with Mr. Fritsch, against your council, so.
Going to recommend, the chief's recommendation of Andrew Fritsch to full-time patrolman?
Egley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Basset?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Anything else, any questions for Sir Doctor? Fire an EMS, Bruce?
I'd like to give you an update on our tanker that's being delivered one of these days. We have no, no definite timeframe, but they are on, it is on the line to be built. So it's in the process.
That was told to us early this summer. Is the truck built and now it's on the line to be equipped?
Yeah, basically the frame was done, put online, now it's going through plumbing, electrical and all that stuff. And you don't rush those things, so that's where we stand on that.
Where's that build at? South Dakota, huh?
Yeah, somewhere, somewhere, I'm not sure. Also, since this past weekend, we were busy. I'd like to have council, let them know that I am proud of the fire department's actions this weekend, and I think the council should be proud also. We saved, we saved two houses. It's still standing, but the one is total, total out. The second one was cut through the roof, gassed with water, and we leave. Plus, two o'clock this morning, we went to a mutual aid with Sherwood down Mark Center. That was a total loss. And families are getting help with Red Cross. Also, the mutual aid companies that we go with is Sherwood, Farmer, they're automatic, our post drop, Sherwood, Farmer, they're on their way also. And I, we all work real well together, which is surprisingly, because there's a lot of departments don't work well. So again, I'd like to shout out to my people how well they did this weekend. Any other questions?
I commend your department, make it official, or, you know, I think you did a great job. Is that your tone out?
But no, no.
Your tone out.
No, no.
You know, I, that's a lot, three.
Yeah.
Couple mil a night.
Saturday morning at ten, and then it was Saturday around noon time for the second one, and then two o'clock this morning.
So I commend.
Yeah.
Make it official or whatever, I'm sure council.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Be safe. Any questions for Bruce?
Who was, who was command last night?
Who's command last night? Be Sherwood, Sheridan Fire Department Chief, eight twenty, Daryl Rock. He was in command.
Couldn't make him out. Couldn't make him out.
You were listening to it?
Yeah, everything he said, I couldn't make it out.
Yeah. Sometimes Daryl is on the go. He's a, he's a hell of a fire chief though, he really is.
He did a fine job too.
Thank you, thank you.
For a man your age.
Yeah, man my age. Somebody asked me the other day how long I'm going to go. I said, hey, if I can't, if I can't get out of bed at two o'clock in the morning, that's the time I hang it up. So approved it last night, so I'm still in the game.
Well, you keep burning them down just a block from your house, you'll be all right.
Yeah, it didn't take long to get there.
Good job, Bruce.
Thank you, thank you.
Park Director Jennifer, you're going to present. You're up.
Okay.
Kind of update us what's going on with the walking track. Heard a lot of things.
Yes, there's a lot going on, so I wanted to update everybody. So it's been, what, two years? I'm not sure when we first met, but it's been When we initially met, we didn't even have a location of where we wanted to do this trail. And the purpose of purchasing this was for the wells and being able to utilize that and having a, a walking trail for public use around it was ideal. So the goal is to eventually have the forty acres and make it a conservation area with native plants for Ohio, which of course would, you know, benefit for clean water and healthy soil. So I met with Pessels Forever and they offered a biologist to come and survey the property and kind of provide us a step-by-step phase of what we would need to do for our overall goal. The biologist specializes in conservation programs and habitat planning. She will assist with designing and developing and local programs to So the biologist is named Tammy Stade, she's at a compliance. And she is currently creating a, a phase project for us. We should have that hopefully in December. She said she's going to be working on it in the winter months, so that's the goal. So I, I have a, just a rough draft of where we, where the initial trail will go and some future ideas, if you wanted to pass that. Okay. So we are working on five oh one C three, Dick has started that. We still are in the process, we have not received that back yet. We have multiple donations, so we're just kind of waiting on having that five oh one C three so we can deposit those and move forward. So my question moving forward, because I know that the internal portion of this forty acres will be processed currently, right? So I know you reached out with Troyer to help flatten the land, right? So for us and our, and our phase project with the biologist, what is, do you know what's going to be planted there? How long they're going to be utilizing this? Was this to help minimize the cost for processing the land?
The land, I was going to leave it as it is.
Okay.
You know, where it was all lumpy and bumpy.
Okay.
The disking of the land was just a courtesy to you guys.
Okay.
Solely a courtesy.
Okay, so they disced it. Okay.
Smoothed it out. Yep. And originally I wasn't going to do anything with it.
Okay.
We were just kind of, all we needed is to get in there to the wellheads.
Do you know how much that cost?
That cost us anything.
Okay, so there's
If I had to guess for somebody to come in, I would probably say around the five thousand dollar mark.
Okay, so they just did So, okay, so they did this for free, are they farming any part of the land?
Yeah, they're going to either plant some type of grass or some type of clover. They, they've done that twenty acres behind Haber Drive a couple times for us.
That's me.
Do you know what they're planting? Or could we be in communication with them so we find out what they are planting?
I have been asking for a meeting with Taylor and you guys for a couple weeks. Me and Mark are ready for a meeting, to meet with you guys.
Oh, I had no idea, nobody notified me, I had no idea.
I'm in the same boat.
Well, let's set up a meeting.
Sure.
So in order for, I mean, we, we want to make sure that whatever we're planting will, will correlate with that. I don't know if it was the other that mentioned it, but possibly clover, which would be super beneficial for us to redevelop it, it hasn't been used for so long, so you know, adding extra nutrients in there would be fantastic. So I want to just move forward that we're on the same plan, we know what is being planted, and then kind of figure out from there. Do you know how long they're going
This conservation, is this something that we can get out of? If we put it into like a wildlife conservation?
Well, we don't want to necessarily have it tied up where it's, because of the fact that it has the well use, I worry that if we had any sort of government entity of being it titled as such, that we would lose one or the other. So we want to make sure that we don't do that, and we want to be able to, to coexist, right? So we want to make sure that, you know, you have access to the wells at any point and it's not a sacred area and that we could also use the remaining portion, you know, for enjoyment, for public use. Having something that is, there's like a vernal pool that was mentioned. So it'd be like wetlands in the back, but without having it titled as such, but just, you know, so it's enjoyable.
But like on your map here, you got like, you know, water for your wetlands. Now, if this is put into your conservation, is what you keep calling conservation, right?
Well, just because I want to Well, just because I want to restore more of a natural plant life in the area versus being farmed, ideally.
As long as, as long as we would still have access to do any work that we would need to?
After the three to five years?
Forever.
For the
1,900-foot-long easement from AEP, that's gonna go Sure, sure. Here's your well field.
Yeah.
So, this, this red here, it's gonna all be the underground utility of the power coming in. This is our water line.
Okay.
Eight-inch water line, it's coming in.
So, that would be like over this? Is this where the housing addition would be, or before the housing addition?
This is the
Okay, so this is
So, we, we've got power coming straight through here. It's gonna come through here, and it's gonna go to those wellheads, to this generator. And then, the water line is coming right through here.
So, I don't want to prohibit anything with that. I mean, this is just gonna be plants. There's no gonna be, there's no structure. We don't have, that doesn't have to be there specifically. I just thought a nice sitting area. Um, this isn't necessarily water as a man-made. Um, it's called a vernal pool, so when the snow melts, it's naturally wet in that location, which, um, certain types of plants and animals would thrive in that harsh environment that don't normally exist in other environments, and that it just dissipates and regular plants come up. So, just to be, you know, something nice to feature, but nothing man-made, nothing that changes the land itself.
Okay. Now, are you wanting to like grow tall grasses there, say after Troyer's is all done? After, we'll say, five years?
Different types of grasses and wildflowers, you know, pollinators is ideally what we are looking for.
My big concern is, this is all annexed into the village.
Okay.
So, it would all have to be maintained at a certain regulation on height.
So, what is the height?
Currently, it's six inches.
So, that entire the entire field?
All 53 acres.
I think this is a little different.
Ornamental.
Yeah.
Because the phone calls are gonna come in. They come in now on that 20 acres. If it's eight inches, they're calling.
I, I think this is gonna be something big if it gets done right, and so I wouldn't worry about flowers being 18 inches high, I mean personally. And it's a nature trail, it's not gonna be
Well, you can't, you, you've got to Fight by them, no matter whether you think it would be all right or not.
Well, personally, I, I mean, that's my personal, this is gonna be something different. It's gonna be a walking trail, nature. Yeah, that's
Here's my opinion. We're starting out way too fast. Thousand and come up, uh, with not enough gallons per minute, and, and might have to move over someplace else.
About the internal So, three to five years is too soon?
No, I just, I know, I think I know what you're saying.
Yeah, let the village get completely done.
This is nothing set in stone. So, I mean, we're just coming up with the possibilities, like here's step by step, here's what you need to, to, what kind of seeds you would need to plant, how much that would cost. And then, moving forward, like if you plant this at this particular year, this year you would need to maintain it. They'll talk about different, like you'll have to mow several, several times a year in order for it to flourish, so, I mean, it's just a
Who will do all those things?
Who'll do what?
Mowings and
That would be maintained by us.
And who is us?
The Trail Association. So, the whole point of fundraising and, and trying to gather for grants, which is what we would need to have for this phase project, um, to apply for those grants, the grants would help maintain the trail itself, so that would alleviate any undue stress onto anyone else.
You realize that even though you're saying that you are still gonna have, still gonna So, what you do is going to be
Public, public projects, with public bidding, and all that stuff. They know different than what I said about the splash pad. They can raise $10 million, it's still a village project.
Yep. There's gonna be a lot of volunteers to this work, correct?
Yes.
I mean, you have to pay their
Well, that part of it's fine, but I'm saying if anything that's being contracted, somebody to come in and do work or whatever, that's all gotta be done in the name of the village
So, we're, we're not asking for someone to come in and us bid. It would be paying for fuel for someone that was volunteering. I mean, it would be, I mean, that's the whole point, and we're gonna need to purchase seeds. I mean, that could be quite pricey. To start for the seven to 10 acres, we're looking at maybe $700 for seeds, and that'll just be, um, a fire block. So, it'll be different types of practices, and they're not gonna grow, you know, the alfalfa, it'll be different types of clover, so they're not gonna grow that high, so we don't have to worry about mowing, so that'll be the start. So, if there was ever a fire in that field, that's the fire block, where it stops and kind of piece everything together, especially with having houses or potential of houses nearby. I mean, that was ideally what we wanted to do, which is why we also had a biologist come in, because this is information that I would not know. So, that's what we're looking with, you know, organization like that's rather, in order to come up with the best plan moving forward.
Cory, do you have, as a village, you know, where, we'll say we have to put in two or three more wells, you have any idea where they might be?
Uh, I've got some prints that show where well ten could possibly go. This was first developed, they had shown three or four, I think, wells, and probably more than eight acres. They kept saying you need a lot of field, not grid outside, right? Do you have any
Especially with the placing, that they have to do with already feed, or what you need to consume that lot, but
I'm not saying the outside, to me, the outside parameter of the trail, I think it looks nice, I think you can do a lot of flowers and trees and keep that very professional looking. It's the interior part that I'm kind of concerned about, uh, with future infrastructure for wells and different things. Not saying that it can't be, you know
And, and so if he was having someone farm it, I mean, uh, really, if you're farming it, what would be the
We'd do whatever we wanted, and we'd just pay the person that was farming for whatever damage we had to do to their crops if we interrupt it, basically, if necessary for village, uh, purposes, that we would try not to, if we could hold off until the end of the lease or something. But if it was an emergency, we had a well go down or something, and he was farming or whatever, we'd just say, hey, we need this section here, you know, you've already done so much work, or whatever, on this, we'll pay it for what's the difference if we
So, I mean, it would be, eventually, when, if it was, we were able to do the grasses and flowers, it wouldn't be any different, you know, I mean, it's not impeding anything substantial, it's just plants. Um, so, I do have further questions. Bit out with Troyer's farming this, then?
No, there's no money to
Yeah, there's money, I asked that question, there was no money involved, so
Right, but, so this is for their personal use? Do they get financial gain off of it?
Save this money, just like the bar, 20 acres there.
Yeah.
Always had to have our employees mow it. And it took time, so now they come in and cut the hay. It looks a lot better now, they've cut it twice, so there's, they, in turn, they get
But they have, they have money, you know, for time, work, you know.
Fuel.
I mean, I did the same thing with Troyer's out behind the school where the solar field is. They done ours, and they, we didn't pay them anything, they didn't pay us a, a same thing, but they kept it chopped down four times a year, and they built it up, took it to their place, and
Okay.
We didn't have to have two customers, or two people put all the hours on lower and waste a lot of gas. We didn't say that there was no money swapping in.
Because I even asked Cheryl, just to make sure.
Yeah, I just was, I was curious how that worked. Um, so, will you, you have my contact? I'd really like to set up a meeting, just so I know, you know, what, I mean, what we have to look at, I mean, we're not gonna be able to start planting anything until the spring anyway, um, or even really creating a path, so I just want to know what we're looking with, and what we can do moving forward, and it also makes me nervous if, you know, if maybe we need to start looking for another location. Um, I really want to, I need to work to do the best. I mean, for us, we work the best, so I'd really like to work together and stop or prohibit or block anything, I really just want to coexist and have something nice.
I don't think you need to find another location, I just think what you're saying, plant in the spring of 2023 or 2024.
As far as the perimeter?
I don't want
And then 2023, yes.
Earlier, you know, if I go in too fast, you know, it might take some time for all of our stuff to get put in place first, before
Right, I mean, so
Before we start too early.
The perimeter would be, you know, like maybe 20 feet on the outside, and that would be it. And so, nothing even in the center, a lot of this is like our dream plant someday, so, I mean, that's gonna take a lot of work, we're just
Prior to coming in today, what was your business plan, when were you hoping to kind of start the path, have everything planted by, the path completely finished? What did that look like?
That's still gonna take several years. I mean, so that's going to be a huge project, so, and that's why I wanted to know what the timeframe was of when we were speaking to Troyer's, because for us to fundraise, I mean, it might be, you know, 10 to 15,000 to get all of the different types of seeds and growth, and that's gonna take some time. But it hasn't been farmed, and it hasn't been used for a long time, and it's a lot of, um, tezel that's out there, which So, and then rebuilding, you know, the natural, like nitrates back into the soil would be very beneficial, so, I mean, I was planning that it would take three to five years anyway, but I was hoping that we would have something by five years. So, I mean, but, you know, this is something that we could work together and, and try to come up with, something that works for our community, this is, um, longevity.
I think that's the key, you know, working with Cory, Troyer's, council knows, community knows.
Communicate.
Yeah.
That's my question, does anyone have any questions?
Any more questions for Jennifer? Good, bad? Are you excited about it?
I think it looks pretty exciting, it'll be a nice, nice addition to the community.
Yes.
I appreciate that you have done so much research on Ohio native plants.
Yes.
You know, our current well field is essentially a park, and you know, we've been able to get things in there and take care of that land, to then have it more of a natural park, basically. I think that it seems like we can do it, and I appreciate that you're doing the right way and including the right people into this process, and, yeah, I like that, you put in a lot of hard work.
Thank you very much, I have, I've tried.
And, and when you said your three to five year plan?
Yeah.
I was, when I said you're going too fast, I only meant that you, we need to have the time for the village to become established. I'm not opposed to your, to your plan, I'm just, we need to get the village in, get everything of theirs in and done.
Yes.
And then say, okay, here it is, show me what you're gonna do.
So, again, it's just plants, we're not building any structures. Eventually, I'd like to have some benches and some gazebo's, I mean, when, like, a parking area with education That wouldn't be much of an idea, it would be prior to, I mean, it'd be right at the entrance, right? And I would like to have a gate at the, um, at, at the road of the well road, I don't know what you want to call it, um, just so there's no public use there. I mean, I, I want that to be prohibited. Um, but then, the, the actual walkway, I mean, and that's it, I just want it to be dirt mowed, I don't want any gravel, I just, I want it to be all natural.
Thank you for informing us, and I'm excited about it.
Good.
I'm on the, help you, I'm a volunteer on the committee, so
Good.
That's, I think it's down the road, it's gonna be fabulous. Really don't have anything like that around here.
No, no, not
And other communities have trails, about every community, you know, Defiance, and so I think it's
It'll be part of the park, I'm guessing, the vision is, it'll be part of the park. In this city also.
Yep.
Just gonna more than triple the size of the park.
You're gonna need potties and everything out there.
I would prefer not.
Oh, yeah?
Ideally, I mean, a lot of, when you go to other areas that have trails, they don't have one.
Fertilize them flowers, huh?
There might be like dog bags and garbage at the entrance, but there's not usually a restroom at those locations.
Oh, there are.
If you want, we'll talk about it, but
Thank you, Jennifer.
I don't want to clean it.
I think we're on the same page now, work with Cory.
Yeah.
That's the key. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, fiscal officer report.
You have all the fund status, the August utility, just about August everything, you need a comm. notice. Do you have any questions? Cheryl will do that tomorrow. Um, the only thing, otherwise, that we need to, um, she wanted me to specify just, she gave you the informations on the four departments that have run out of funds for the
Fuel.
She wanted to make that clear, that none of those departments are in trouble, it's just, you're prepared when she comes to you for more money. And the other is, we'd like to ask council to approve the flu shots, annual flu shots again for the
Okay, entertain a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Go call.
Mike, I'm gonna put you on that second, because you're pretty close.
Good, too.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments to Dawn, or that she could relay to Cheryl?
I'm gonna try to set up a meeting with her for, uh,
Thanks for filling in.
Cool.
Did a great job.
Okay, mayor's report, Christmas cruise through is starting in years. That's a great thing for our community. Got a letter from the health department just today, and it's been two and a half years, and things are back to mostly normal, is what they said, mostly normal, so, operation. So, after two and a half years, uh, since March, my first term, my first year, is when that started in March, so, had, I've had a lot of meetings, it's been a while, every day, now it's just back to normal, most of them. So, that's good to hear. Okay, the trick or treat, now you gotta set that. I'm gonna set, now if you guys want to change that, that's fine, let me know now. Um, October the 29th, that's the last Saturday before Halloween, is the 31st on a Monday, so, I think it works well to have it on a Saturday. Is the hour is four to six?
Four to six.
Okay, so, unless So, anyway, that's, I'll set that, because Cory told me, said a lot of peoples ask about that.
Attention, so that, I don't respond to this, I'll be breathing.
Okay, last but not least, this is a news release from the Ohio
Okay, last but not least, this is a news release from the Ohio Department. Yeah, the Ohio Department of Education is with the U.S. Department. Anyway, congratulations to thirteen Ohio schools recognized as National Blue Ribbon School. These learning communities are among two hundred ninety-seven nation across the country. So, two hundred ninety-seven schools, thirteen in Ohio, honored across the country by the U.S. Department of Education. So, I want to join us in applauding these students. Now, Hicksville is named. That's the reason I'm, out of thirteen in Ohio, Hicksville was a National Blue Ribbon School. So, I think this is a big thing. Joining a lot of students, educators, families and communities for creating safe and welcoming schools while almost master challenging and engaging content. So. I saw the list. I don't think they ranked them. Maybe they did.
My wife said they ranked.
So, anyway.
Anyhow.
Congratulations to those students. It's a big part of our community. And so.
School worker out there.
It's a great thing. So, anything else needs to be brought before this?
You, you do do a good job there.
I try. Thanks.
Job makes him look good.
Oktoberfest happened this weekend. I was not able to do a tip.
No troubles. That's good. And I think it was well-run.
Girl, girl cut her big toe and that was about it.
So, that was big. I have no idea how many people.
St. Mike's has a treasure in your trunk kind of thing going on. People sell them, they're in service about there.
Watch had over a hundred and forty people participate.
How was your donut bill?
It was pretty good. It was pretty good. Doctor did a pretty good job directing traffic.
Did he get a donut?
Do we have any questions for the sewer guy?
I can answer. I got a couple things. A lot of things going on, good things. So.
Downtown businesses, you know, the new style salon. Avery Furniture has some, I was.
Don't up business, I, but.
Next door to me, you know, popped up, but you see a lot more activities going on downtown businesses, which is really pretty big.
Any other comments? Joel came. So, anybody had any questions about their wastewater plant? He's here to answer. Still working?
It's all still working. Um, we finally were able to drop those clarifiers. They haven't been down and cleaned in several years, from what I understand. Not as bad as what I thought they would be. Um, there is damage in the number two clarifier. They said it could be for this year. So, and that's, we don't know how to think it's clean. So, we, we just need to check. What happened in the past, it got caught up on a scum drop and what it did was it bent the whole scum, scumware down. It bent a few brackets and also bent that from scum drop. So, it allows water to drop in the scum drop where it should. And it actual, actually rubs off metal a little bit over time. The metal will rub away. Of course, it rusts, squels water. So, um, that's basically what's going on right now.
Well, we really need it fixed, right?
We need it fixed. Dire. So, other things could be addressed a lot more than that right now.
Such as?
Such as stream boating. We got problems with the screen drive. That's on the list of things to do. The whole, the drive system is slacked out. There's a lot of space at the bottom of the sprocket. I finally got some gas in to get calibration, the meter up to calibration so we can go down and fix it. We have more work to do on our ditches. We're not done dealing with that. I'm almost finished up with our septic receiving. Um, we've had issues with it, keeping it up and running since I've been here. Almost completed. Waiting on a few more things to drop in our pump and fix that. And like our UV system, we've been, I've found more things wrong with it. So, just kind of jumping around, trying to make everything work right. So.
Any other questions? Thanks for coming on.
Yeah, yeah. And I see the company that came in, they came in to look at the first drop clarifier. We were hoping that in short timeframe, we had them come in, that they could try and get down in there and fix it. But they decided they did not want to tackle it this year. And the chance that we can drop it and it's not too cold for them to get in there or another company, we'll do our best to try and get somebody in. But, um, so.
Okay, anything else? Any questions for me?
Beverly.
Yes, ma'am.
Barth.
Yes.
Basset.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes, thank you.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.